Hi. I would like to call to order-
Recording in progress.
Sorry, I'll start over. I'd like to call to order the ACSD Board meeting for June 9th. The current time is 6:30. As our usual practice, it's time for introductions, starting with Jason.
Jason Chents.
Mary Heather Roble.
Steve Gadd.
Shave McCall.
Ellie Roth.
Trisha Allen.
Helen Wieland Weest.
Ron MacLeith.
Jess Vanen will know that.
Steve Orzek.
Mark Wilson.
Wendy Baker.
Suzanne Buck.
And for administrative staff and the audience, if you could introduce yourselves.
Courtney Cron, Director of Teaching and Learning.
Matt Correnti, Director of Finance and Operations.
Thank you so much. Next up, I would like a motion to adopt our agenda.
So.
Okay, so Trisha and who was the-
Jason.
And Jason? Any changes, modifications?
I'd like to make a modification to it and add the addition of one person's name pending letters and whatnot underneath Personnel Appointments. I want to add a person's name under Action Personnel Appointments pending all approvals.
Any other changes? Okay, so all those in favor of adopting the agenda as modified, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, great. And I'll let Navia introduce herself, so she's joined us as well.
Oh, hello, I am Navah Glickman, the 11th grade student representative of the school.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is our time for public comments. We have two public comments. The first one is at this time, and then later on in the agenda, we have a second. Public comments are encouraged and welcome at our board meetings during the periods designated for public comment. I request that comments are limited to three minutes per person. Citizens will be called on to make their statement by myself. As a reminder, the public comment period is not designed for, to be a discussion back and forth, but rather an opportunity for board members to listen to constituents. And please remember, public comments regarding personnel, students, or legal matters will not be heard by the board. With that said, and excuse me, I've got a tickle, and I've been putting on my cough drops, so I get raspy. Yes, Jason?
Just for the matter of Laura, join the moment.
Okay, thank you so much. So are there any public comments in the room? Okay, if you could introduce yourself, go ahead. Joanna?
Okay, Joanna's heart. Okay. Hi, I'm Joanna Caldwell, I live in Rippton. And I came here to talk about the separate flagpole issue. I watched the board meeting where that was proposed and voted on. My neighbor came for the same reason. I'll get us started. I was a little bit, more than a little bit disappointed that it was voted on so quickly, because my first thought upon watching it was, shouldn't the students have a say in this? It's their school. And I know from, I maybe should mention that I'm, I was one of the founding members of the Middlebury Chapter of Showing Up for Racial Justice. And I just know from peripherally being in the community, that there were student groups that worked very hard to get that Black Lives Matter flag put up on the flagpole. And I, it made me sad to hear a community member express that he was heartbroken by seeing the Black Lives Matter flag near the United States flag. That, that is something that needs to be unpacked and shouldn't be just like a blanket, like, oh yeah, somebody wants to fundraise and get a new flagpole, let's do it. I just felt it was very hasty, and I would like to see that given some more thoughtful consideration, and especially, please bring in the voices of the students, and especially any students who are aligned with those student groups. I mean, it probably happened before the student behind me was here, I don't know that I'm thinking it was, but if, if, if they consider themselves aligned with this student movement to get that flag up, they, their voice should really be heard. So that is why I came tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, is there, if there is anyone online that is also wanting to make a public comment, please raise your Zoom hand. I'm gonna then see if there's anyone else in the audience? Okay?
I'm Alexis Williams, I'm a student, I'm a junior here at the high school, and we also came for similar reasons. I just think it was very, like baffling that a decision such as this was made with such little consideration of the general public and by so little people. So we're just kind of here to kind of collaborate and listen to what's going on.
Thank you.
Looking online, I don't see a Zoom hand, looking back in the audience, yes?
Samantha Eisenberger, Rippton, just on the same wavelength, just like clarification, and if any board members would be willing to speak to what was just the whole situation, just to bring more clarity, so that we can understand how the decision was made. Yeah, I think that there's just a lot more clarity that would be helpful in how we're here, and then how to best move forward. And a little tangent, I also was wondering if any board members would be willing to speak on moving forward with Rippton Elementary School, just clarifying for our community what is happening with the building next year, because it sounds like there are some ways that the building is going to be used, and it would be really nice for our community to know what that is. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And as I had indicated earlier, this isn't necessarily a two-way conversation, and we don't have like the Rippton update on the agenda, but I'm sure we will be having it on the agenda. And I know that Dr. Baker, your last meeting, I think it was, or the meeting before, gave an update. So would you have any recommendations for how they would get the most recent information?
I would, yeah. Lori Cox and I are doing some coordination around how to pull together a team of folks within Rippton, and also ACSD employees that kind of can chop that, plot that course, and see what that looks like to bring recommendations to the board. So Lori is in the know, and, and she's right there. So that, that would be the best, the easiest way to connect. Yep, or you can call me, so either is fine.
Thank you so much. Anyone else who would like to make a public comment? Yes, introduce yourself.
Hi, everyone, I'm Addie Luntner. I go to Middlebury College, and I grew up in Arlington, Vermont, so I'm a public school Vermont student. I recently, I wrote a letter to the board a little while ago about the flagpole issue, and I'm just here with Alexis today to sort of expand on that a little bit, and just say we are really open to discussion and want this to be a collaborative process, especially with students. And so we, we want to have those discussions with you, and not just have this something that's urgently rushed through, is making a decision. Because if we do have that dialogue, that's how, that's how real change happens, and for students to be involved in that is really important. And I also want to mention, we're both part of the Vermont Student Anti-Racism Network, and so we, again, are a group of students who really want to engage with adults in dialogue about our education. And so we feel it's really important for us to be involved, and again, we'd love to talk with you one-on-one, or in whatever method would be, would be good for you all.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, it's L-E-N-T-Z-N-E-R.
Thank you.
Okay, and looking back on Zoom, is there anyone who would like to make a comment? Please raise your Zoom hand. And then back to the room, is there any other public comments? Yes?
I'm sorry, this is a little unorthodox, but we did have someone who intended, who expressed interest in coming, but was unable to make it, so if it's okay with the board, I'll just read that out loud.
Sure. Is anyone up yet? Go ahead.
This is from Sam Ostrow. This was sent to the full board this afternoon. Dear ACSD School Board, I'm writing to express deep concern and dismay over the recent ACSD Board decision to allow a single individual acting on behalf of a special interest group to use his power, influence, and financial access to override a democratic movement by the students of the high school. His expressed, quote, "heartbreak at seeing a symbol of support raised by the student body should be seen as a personal issue of his, not as a burden to be carried by the student body. By allowing a private donation that includes the stipulation that further democratic decisions of support and collective action are suppressed, we will be showing our students that wealth and power matter over, or more than, collective decision-making. At the very least, I ask and recommend that the final vote to accept or deny this donation, in parentheses, including its expressed restrictions, be put forward to the student and faculty body of the school impacted. Do not pre, I do not pretend to know the outcome of that vote, but particularly at this moment in history, I suggest that we let democracy determine the result. Pass or fail, it will at least be a decision made in the spirit of and truly by the collective instead of those in a position of particular power and privilege. Thank you for your consideration, Sam Ostrow, Middlebury resident and parent of two young children."
And looking back to Zoom, I see no hands raised, so I believe that's the conclusion of the public comments. Thank you so much-
Thank you.
-for coming and participating in tonight's meeting. Next up is a recommendation to approve the minutes for our May 27th board meeting. Actually, it's 28th.
No, it's 27th.
It was 27th? Yeah, okay.
26th was the morning.
Okay, thank you. I got myself confused. May 27th, I was right to begin with. If I could have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Jamie.
Second.
And a second? We had a tie between Ellie and Steve. Any comments, feedback?
Well done. Very well done, Mary Heather, thank you.
Okay. And since Laura is online, Laura, did you have any comments or feedback? Keep me honest here, because I tend not to see her and don't under, you know, realize sometimes when people are online, we would like to speak. Seeing no other comments?
I'll let you know.
Okay, good, good. Appreciate that. All those in favor of approving the minutes of May 27th, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The minutes have been approved. Next up is approval of the ACSD bills. Go ahead, Jason.
On June 2nd, Suzanne and I read the bills, there were three warrants, there were two payroll warrants, one dated May 16th for $1.4 million, another payroll warrant dated May 30th for $1.4 million, and a general warrant dated May 30th for $503,000. Found no issues or concerns, all the questions we had were answered, and so I moved that we approved the bills as read.
One second.
Any questions? Okay, all those in favor of approving the bills as reported by Jason, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The bills are approved. Next up is report of our student representative. I still have S, representative. I do have a statement from Sophia that I'm gonna read later, but I'm gonna let Nava address the board.
Okay, hi, I'm, sorry, it's been a little while, it's been, it's been the end of the year. And speaking of that, yeah, so this past Friday, we had our award ceremony and sort of, I don't know what you'd call it, a pre-graduation event, which was really cool, a lot of students were honored and congratulated for various departmental stuff, awards, achievements, and various like book awards and college stuff, so that was really cool. And for seniors, graduation was on Saturday, so that's great, they're done, and the past week they had-
Those, those dirty rotten.
They had, they-
Get to one place.
Yeah, exactly, top dog. They had their raft race the week before, they had senior sunset, senior sunrise, and project graduation. Going into the next year, in terms of senior sort of like privileges and, and sort of creating like a positive community environment, the junior class is working with our teachers, especially Mr. Newseeder, to host these junior class meetings, where we're gonna advocate for certain events, like more fun events like senior sunrise and senior sunset. And other traditions, we're talking about trying to fundraise for more of a senior class project, possibly dedicated maybe to Mr. Bartlet or, or something like that. And so, yeah, hopefully that will really contribute to a more positive school environment for us next year. And then, talking, them talking about the flagpole got me thinking about, you know, other students, what I've heard it being talked about, because that's something I feel like would be helpful for me to share. So I'm in, I'm the president, co-president of the club, the Student Coalition on Human Rights, and our last day, we just had donuts and we were talking, and we were talking about the flagpole and what different people's perspectives on it. And some of the perspectives I heard was one that it, there wasn't a certainty on, like, where was this coming from, like where the request was coming from? And to me, it totally seems like this is not some, like, this is not a person who needs to be, like vindicized. This is somebody who has a value set on more so patriotism rather than a disregard for, like, Black Lives Matter and pride flags and that sort of thing. And I, I don't think everyone realized that at first, and I think that was an important thing for, to realize, and maybe more people could, that could be put out there. Because I think that is part of where some anger was coming from over that decision. And then, secondly, you know, we try to get a lot of things done during these club meetings, and it's difficult to get things passed like that. And years ago, there was a kid who came here and he spoke, and he advocated for the Black Lives Matter flag to be put up, and we were just talking about how much more smooth that, that sort of process might be able to go if, if it was decided for there to be a second flagpole, because it was, it, I don't know, carried less, like, it would ruffle less feathers, I guess. So that is some of the stuff I've heard, and there's definitely a lot of perspectives on it, but, yeah, I don't know if that's helpful to know, but, yeah.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, that was very helpful.
Yes, very much so. Any questions for student rep? Well, Steve?
No, I just want to appreciate you sharing that information.
Oh.
It's very helpful, so thank you.
And Mary Heather?
I also just want to make sure that the board recognizes that Nava was honored at some of these award ceremonies, as just a stellar student, and especially with respect to representing in the community. So congratulations to Nava, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for that, Mary Heather.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so what I'd like to do next, I had reached out to Sophia and had congratulated her, and, you know, said I would be removing her name from the agenda, because most likely she wouldn't be here. And she sent a really nice note that she said I could share with you. "I want to start off by saying thank you for everything you and the board have done for ACSD community over the years. I had no idea what an impact the board had until I sat down in a seat and watched it all happen. I also want to thank, say thank you for including me in discussions and allowing other students in the future to follow behind. I feel that's, is, that it's important to give students a voice in important decisions involving them. I feel privileged to have gotten to know everyone on the board over the last couple of years, and I hope you will pass that along, but I will not be attending Monday for meetings." Thanks for everything, Sophia. Okay, so I thought that was worth reading. Next up, we have reported the superintendent. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Baker.
Okay, so we begin as normal with Personnel Appointments and Resignations. Brooke Fox is, I just want to call to your attention that she is a, a general educator that is part of our, of our Mums Alternative Pathway programming, and so we're continuing to staff that, and, and that's, that's, that's pretty exciting. I think that's, that's, she's the only person that, that is filling one of those roles, and I just wanted to point that out. I also would love to add, we, we've had a couple of tech gremlins of what today in the office, and so, so I, I would love to add to that, as Suzanne said, just permission to employ Lisa Holderness as a science teacher at one point, FTE Step 19, Effective 818. Should the last moment of the hiring process be able to be finalized? And, and I, it's not a normal thing that we do, but this time of year, you know, candidates, you know, they, they have multiple offers, they're in that position, there are other boards meeting, and, and I don't want to put us behind. That does not mean that we don't do our absolute due diligence with every hire that we have, but, but if, if it's possible for you to extend your preliminary approval, should that feel- But, but if, if it's possible for you to extend your preliminary approval, should that feel good after that last step, which happens to be meeting with me, take place, I would appreciate that in this circumstance. We would have already done it, you know, today. It's just that the tech gremlins did not agree that that's what we should be doing today, so. Presented for your consideration.
Yeah, and so following up on that, is there any objections to include this individual as a preliminary approval pending the final hiring offer? Okay. Excellent. So therefore, can I have a motion to appoint, to approve the appointments and resignations as indicated in the, on the agenda and the one addition?
I move to appoint Brooke Fox, general educator, 1.0 FTE. Appoint Scott McDougall, paraprofessional, 1.0. Appoint Siler Gunther, bronze technician, 1.0 FTE. Approve pending approval, final approval, Lisa Holderness, 1.0 FTE, science. Accept the resignation with deep regret, Deborah Herwitz, administrative assistant, 1.0. Accept the resignation of Agent McCullough, paraprofessional, 1.0 FTE. Accept the resignation of Barbara Palmer, school nutrition manager, 1.0 FTE. And accept the resignation of Louisa Travers, paraprofessional, 1.0 FTE.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any questions, discussion? See, go ahead, Steve.
Dr. Baker, could you give us a rundown of how many positions we still have open and how many we're looking to fill still?
Yes and no.
Oh, okay.
In the sense that I, I'm most familiar with the licensed educator needs that we have, because those, those come up through me. Our unlicensed staff have different ways, you know, that they move through the system, so I'm not as clear as to how many we have open, but what I would say is that we have, we now have one, two, three, four, five special ed openings. We're staffed for, as for the special educators fully for five entire minutes, and so we, you know, however, you know, we keep working to, to fill those. We have had two of our SLPs that, that we have hired, we sent their acceptance, so, you know, we're, we're kind of working our way through that. We have a French opening at the high school that we're still working on, and in our elementary schools, are staffed, you know, I'll, I'll be bringing to you a, likely a social worker which will complete the complement for all alternative staff that are, that are together, you know, in this. You recall, we have a big transition, right, from the ACP and other positions into kind of a programming that we're building internally, so that, those will be fully staffed. And we've actually had a remarkably low turnover in our licensed staff, you know, compared as I understand it from other years. So, so that feels like we're, we're almost there with the exception of our, you know, special educators and, and SLPs, which, you know, is, is something that is a national trend as, as well. I mean, that's, that's not something new for us. So that said, you know, we, we have applicants every day, and, and we do have some people that have applied for these positions that, you know, really are at the very beginning of the licensing process. They would love to come and work with us in, in an apprentice type role, and so we're kind of holding on to that while we determine whether licensed staff are available, so we're in process. And, and actually, I think you, we're, we're doing fairly well in our, in our unlicensed staff ranks as well. You know, it's the, there is a certain amount of turnover that happens every year. They tell me that that turnover this year feels much less than in other years. I don't, I don't have the experience to feel that, but it, it feels like we're not, and we're not in a bad place right now, although we've got work to do.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any others? Okay. All those in favor of approving the appointments and resignations as read by Suzanne, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Yep.
Thank you, Laura.
And Steve.
And Steve. Thank you, Steve.
So the second item is actually related. You know, we have, sometimes we have the need to hire people while you are sort of in recess, and last year, you, you gave me the authority to extend positions to people that we could bring on, so that I didn't have, the board wouldn't undo it, you know, at some point, which is really important to people who are leaving one job to go to a next, and so, so that is here, as I think that would be very helpful, if you wouldn't mind extending that privilege again until we're able to meet again in August, and then I'll certainly review with you all of that business. The expectation is that candidates that we bring to you, that, that we are looking at in the next couple of weeks, I would be able to bring to you for the final board meeting that you have in June. It's, it's just between that meeting and the first meeting in August that we want to make sure we're able to, to bring people on assuredly that, that to come in the open slots that we have.
And so, this is exactly what we did last year, and I put in here the same language we used last year, with the exception of the date of the year. So if I could have a motion?
I, I move to authorize the superintendent to oversee the hiring process of the district during July 2025, and on final hiring decisions will be reported to the board at our first meeting in August.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion?
Well, I, I don't know if it's appropriate to say this now, but I, I wonder if we might want to review this process. I, I don't know that the board really, I mean, the way I've always heard it, the whole time I've been on the board, is our only employee is the superintendent. And that the superintendent hires the rest of the district, and it's, it's things like this that seem to drag the process out and that seem to hang it up a little bit, and we might want to reexamine whether we really need to do this. But that's probably discussion for another time.
There are pros and cons, but something you can, you can kind of look into as you go.
Yeah, and we need to look at the statutes and see if there's any obligation that's there. There may be. Any other input and questions, discussion?
Thank you for all the hard work you're putting into this.
The team is, there are hiring teams all over the district that really are, have been absolutely relentless, and and we have, we have gotten some really, really wonderful candidates, you know, and, and many of whom are coming to work for us, and and I think the places where we've been scooped by other districts are, we're very clear about what those are, and we'll bring those forward, you know, as, as we, as we can, so.
Okay, are we ready for the question? All those in favor of authorizing our superintendent to oversee the hiring process during July 2025, with final hiring decisions to be reported to the board at the first August 2025 board meeting, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. You have the authority.
Okay. Thank you. So the next item is, is a, just a, just a calling to your attention, the next iteration of superintendent goals. And there are three of them, and, you know, they have been through a discussion with the district leadership team and the district leadership council. You know, as a whole, one of them is to develop a capital improvement plan for ACSD. That's work that the facilities committee is, is undertaking, and so, you know, Matt is the lead on that, and, and I'll, I will help in that process as needed, you know, to ensure that it, it meets the board's expectations relative to that. There are, there are three strategies that you have that I, I tried to phrase in a smart, you know, setup, so that way it was just sort of a little bit easier to follow. The second goal involves the kind of systemic collection of evidence of learning in support of student success, which is a recommendation that's come out of our NIASCV work, that as, as a whole, we're doing wonderful things with students. However, collecting that evidence and demonstrating that, sharing that, and building upon it, you know, which includes involving partners in that process as well, like parents, you know, and, and others. That's something that we need to think about more carefully, you know, as, as a district, and so, so you'll see some strategies also that relate to that, and I think the, the student outcomes committee that the board has is a, is a, is a place where that work will connect. The reason that it, you, it is not phrased as data is because really what we're looking at is evidence of learning. And what does that mean? Which not all data that we create is, is in that area, and, and that was feedback that, you know, I think the, the building administrators rightly had. That if our, if we're keeping our eye on ensuring that we are, we are moving student success forward relative to the evidence of their learning, then that's really important. The rest of it are conditions that might lead them to learn, you know, in certain ways. But the evidence of learning is really what, where the, where the, you know, the, if we place our importance there, that's where we can have the greatest student impact. So, so that has shifted a little bit. The third goal in terms of supporting our specialized service team to transition to a new director of specialized services, who arrives in just a short period of time. Very excited to do so, as they maintain regulatory compliance and forward momentum, and that's something that, you know, we've talked about. I think, you know, there's, there's been good work that, that folks have done as, you know, in the, in the breach between Nicole's departure in December and now, and making sure that everybody is able to continue forward and feel successful. You know, is, is a really important part of certainly my role as we keep going, so. They are there for your discussion or approval or revision suggestions, whatever would be helpful.
Go ahead, Ellen.
I just had a timing question for the first goal around the capital improvement plan. The first and the second strategy, the assessment of the facilities and the capital improvement plan are both slated for completion and presentation to the ACSD board by December 31st. Will those be staggered at all in their presentation, just for the purposes of like processing and absorbing information and getting ready for the board to approve?
The expectation is yes, and, you know, it's my understanding that, that you have not necessarily worked with superintendents around goals in this way, you know, as we've moved ahead, so we're all gonna learn a lot about how best to work these processes out, which is why they say bye, you know, and, and not on. Also, I think the way that the facilities committee is approaching a continuous, you know, a capital improvement plan, CIP is also our continuous improvement plan, which is also an agency of ed legal requirement with the same acronym, so, you know, they, we've flipped them around together. But the way that they're doing that, you know, is, is, is pretty organic and maybe a little bit differently from how that's been done in the past too. So those timelines are, I think, fairly squishy, and we'll make sure not to overload the board, you know, with information in such a way that, you know, you're not able to process, and the public is not able to process all those things at once. It's good, good, good heads up.
Okay, any other general questions, comments, clarifications that folks have?
Were you looking for a motion?
I, well, yeah. I figured I'd, since we started with some, I will.
I didn't know if you, if you wanted a motion and then discussion, or?
Yeah, I was going to, but since we started doing some discussion, I think we'll continue. If not, can I have a motion to approve?
Barb, Steve's gonna stop, so.
Okay, Steve.
Um, on goal number one, strategy three, under measurable, it says meet with student, staff, and family advisory groups. I would think it may be beneficial to include community members in there.
That's, that's an easy shift. It's, it's implied, but good to state, so.
Yeah, and the next one, well, down irrelevant one, it says community voice is critical. I think just making sure that people that aren't directly involved with the school still have a mechanism to participate.
Yeah.
Thanks for calling that up.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the goals as handed out and reported on by Dr. Baker?
I'll move to approve the superintendent goal for 2025, 2026 as presented.
Okay.
One second.
Okay, any other comments?
It's really important that everybody understands that we're in this process together, so I'm gonna come to you and say, so this thing that we thought we're gonna do now, this is amended as follows, right, or here's what we're doing, or this is what this looks like, and so you'll see them in reports, or we're ahead of schedule over here. And it's also really important that you understand that, you know, that I'm actually not doing all this work, right? That the superintendent's office and, and the teams in the buildings are actually really instrumental in facilitating this work as it moves ahead. So, you know, that's, it's, it's many, many hands and brains and hearts that go into achieving any kind of organizational development. It's important to me that you, you understand that from the standpoint of, it just takes, it takes a lot of work to move initiatives like this forward, you know, throughout the district, so. It's, it's a, I can set direction and provide support and help and ensure our resource allocation goes there, and, you know, certainly put in my own blood, sweat, and tears, but the work of others is, is really important for the board to, to just sort of understand. That's, that's what's at the heart of getting good organizational work done.
I would just like to thank you for the time and thought and that went into this and working with the team. I mean, this is just, it kind of blows me away to have all this detail, which is awesome, and I really appreciate it. I think it'll really help as we go forward, as far as what our expectations are and understanding of the work as we go throughout the course of the year. Anyone else have anything that they see, questions? Mary Heather?
Not just, not a question, I guess, just a recognition that many of these goals also obviously involve the board, and specifically our facilities committee and our student outcomes committee, and so it's just gonna be real important that that partnership is solid and, and that the board supports the effort, so. Yeah, no, and I really appreciate that cohesion.
Okay, are we ready for the question? All those all those who would like to approve the superintendent's 2025, 26 goals, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the goals are approved, and I should have basically said as slightly amended, but that's, that'll be there.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Just as a side note, you know, I, I think one of the things that, that, you know, we're really appreciating is more of the voice of students, and, you know, I think, you know, particularly at the high school, Dr. Steele's working with Nava around, you know, ways to communicate with students, things that are going on, and you know, one of the things that, that happened, you know, recently is, you know, we took the shared understanding of high-quality learning that, that I've shared with you, that is, is, is kind of part of what's behind sort of some evidence of learning and what type of learning do we have here, and the student council was able to give some feedback around that, and, you know, they took us a task in scenarios, right? And so it's, it's just, it's really wonderful to have that kind of leadership on the part of students, and and I know that, you know, as, as we are approaching next year in a way that feels far more proactive, you know, we're kind of moving forward in a different kind of way. I, I think that, that, that voice and those opportunities will, will be just even more center stage, and I really look forward to that. So I, I think as I mentioned in the spotlight, I, I felt like our graduating seniors were just exceptionally well-educated. And, and, and that was something that was across the board, and it was across skill. It wasn't, they don't all have It wasn't, they don't all have the same areas of interest. They don't all have the same skill areas in each, you know, content area. But, but I probably had personal conversations with at least half of the senior class, you know, over the course of the year, you know, in some part last week, or saw their work or looked at their work. And the, the depth of how they approach the world is exactly as evidenced in, in the vision that we have for students. And, and I, as I was looking at them and talking with them on Saturday, I just was caught in this real appreciation for the, for what happens in, in the partnership we have with students as they move through our system that leads to that. Because I could hear echoes from students that, that matched classroom things that I've seen happen. And, I, I mean, I, I've, I've worked in and with a lot of educational systems where that is not there. You know, that is really not there. Where I could not walk up into a group of students and say, okay, if, if we've done our job, what I'm gonna hear from them, a cross section of students of various interests and various post-secondary pursuits and so on and so forth, is, are the following five things? And then they come to light. Like, that's not, that's not what you find in, in every educational system. And so I, I think our, our, you know, educators just, just need to really take pride in that. And we need to take comfort in that, you know, so, you know, yield a moment, you know.
Sure. I mean, I just wanted to say, like, a hundred percent. I feel like going from the middle school, especially at a really difficult time, to coming here. And I feel so, like, challenged in a good way by my teachers, my classes. I've seen other people, my peers and my friends, who, like, take math, for example, which is kind of, uh, struggling, or not struggling, it's a difficult subject for everyone to kind of latch onto and gain an appreciation from. And there's so many cool new courses that engage people. And all of our teachers do such a good job at, like, matching to our level and just bringing forth so many, like, interesting and engaging conversations. And I feel so, like, challenged by my peers and motivated. And I feel like that has not even been the case, like, it's been a shift from last year to this year even. And I think it's really, really cool. And so it's definitely like a success to be celebrated.
I love, I love approaching a graduation speech knowing enough about the work of a senior class to wonder if I have anything I could possibly share with them that could add to how they're leaving. Like, that's a real, that's a great position to be in, you know, as opposed to, I gotta make sure they know the following, you know, things in order to be able, right? You know, and, and I, and I, and I, it's just a, it's not an official item on the superintendent's report, but it, but it's just something that, that is probably, you know, important for me to say to you so that you, you know, you hear that about where, where our students are, you know, so, at least from my perspective. All right, so the last thing that is on the superintendent's report is, is, is the process B discussion. If you remember right, at, at either the last board meeting or the, or the meeting before, we talked about how our context is shifting a little bit in our capital improvement planning process where, you know, the state is, is doing funky things and, you know, we wanna make sure that our ducks are in a row so that, because that will enable us to handle whatever funky thing comes our way. And also that we're, we're learning about how to do a capital improvement planning process in a way that really helps us ensure we're, we're examining each building and we're able to, to build a process that is really of value, that is out of the political lens and, and really into what is it that we envision students needing from our facilities and, and, and what is the degree to which we're in a position to provide that? And where do we need capital investment in order to be able to carry that forward? So, so you had charged us with being a little bit clearer about what the deliverables might be if we could start process B in a concurrent manner with process A. Process B being ensuring that we're able to start to put data in relating to the schools in the surrounding towns outside of Middlebury and given that process A is looking at the three Middlebury schools. So, we've come a little ways in getting into process A. And so Matt's put together a few slides that just try to make that a little bit clearer, but, but we'd appreciate your, your, your approval as we get somewhere in terms of beginning in whatever way you feel comfortable. So, go ahead, Matt.
Thanks. And that's process B that we're, we're in here, right?
Yes, yes.
Thanks for that context. And so as we move into process B, I think in the last conversation to the board, we were sort of focusing on Cornwall as the epicenter of process B. I think that's at least what the Addison Independent thought. And it's a good word. But I think for the sake of this conversation tonight, we've kind of zoomed the lens back out to say, you know, let's be more general than that. That, we know that that's a specific need and it's a good example to kind of think of maybe in the back of your, your mind. But process B is really meant to, to look at all of the non-Middlebury schools and to, to ask questions of each school or each facility so that we can start to gain the multifaceted insight that we need to make good facilities decisions and good planning. So, as we chart our approach to process B, what are we asking relative to the roles that our buildings play in the educational mission and in the strategic plan? And there's a hundred different ways that you could ask these questions, but two of the ones that I put in here, just to kind of speak to the thinking, do our facilities detract from the delivery of educational programming? Are buildings hampering our ability for the, the teachers and teams within the building to, to do their jobs? You know, the, the limitations to student educational opportunities could be as literal as not being able to run at top speed in the gym. And they could be as nuanced as specific areas of opportunity that exist in one school but, but not another. A lot of different gradients there. We're also thinking within this realm about workforce inefficiency. And this actually came up not in process B, but, but in a Mary Hogan conversation that we were having the other, the other day regarding staffing. And this idea that in some instances, we may be staffing things in a, a one-to-one capacity where a better layout of a building or a better configuration or better space could efficiently, effectively reduce the need for, for that staffing outlay. And perhaps create an opportunity for more efficient staffing and, and better use of those resources elsewhere. The other angle that we're looking at is operational inefficiency. So this is, you know, operational in the facilities, tech, food service aspects of operations, but also, you know, in our, our human resources. So, I'm thinking with regards to facilities, for instance, are we, you know, using old control systems that require somebody to be in the building? But if we were to replace the controls with something that are more modern and more centralized, we could, you know, effectively repurpose resources operationally elsewhere, be more efficient. And then, you know, are we paying to fix things that would be cheaper to replace, right? And that's the, the core idea of the facilities condition index, which asks, what's the cost of a building to, to rebuild it today? And then what's the cost to fix the same building? That gives us sort of a percentage of the building that's used up or consumed. And is an important part of, of how we measure. So, the next thing from those questions is looking at our methods of measurement because over the years, dating all the way back to the original, or maybe not original, yeah, I guess it was the original ACSD facilities master planning process and the facilities condition analysis that went into that. We've been looking at all these different methods of measurement. That facilities master plan run by TruX was a very nuts and bolts based method of measurement. They went through all of our buildings, they wrote a 500, literally 500-page report on all of them, which broke all of the needs out by priority one, priority two, priority three. Some of you may have heard those talked about by me before. And then put costs to each one of those and said, okay, here's your, you know, 500 pages of information and, and, you know, go make a plan from there. That was one facet, but it wasn't the whole story. And so I think as we move through this process, we've been trying to track other methods of measurement to make sure that when we analyze what our facilities' needs are, we are looking at them from all of the angles and considering every piece and how they all relate to each other. Because it's not as, as simple as just saying, you know, let's do the, the highest priority things first and then the second things and then the third. So here are some different methods of measurement that we've identified in the process so far. And so when we were talking about process B, we're talking about looking at these measuring sticks for each one of those buildings, just in the same way that we've been looking at them for our Middlebury schools. The first is principal-led educational specification. So this, EdSpecs sometimes shortened to, is asking the question, how does our programming interface with each of our buildings? And this is really user-generated information that comes from questionnaires that we've put out to staff who use the buildings every day. And that surveying is, is led and assisted by the principals who will join the advisory team of the capital improvement planning process to refine this user data and come up with a really clear understanding of, of usership and, and what programming looks like in each of our spaces. The next method of measurement is our inflation-adjusted and progress-updated 2019 facilities evaluation. So that's just that 500-page report that I was just mentioning. Like I said, we had, we had some pricing in there and the pricing got inflation-adjusted and sort of formulaically increased every year, dating all the way back to 2019 when some of the collection was occurring. The further out you get from that actual collection, the blurrier the pricing gets. And so, you know, here we are, close to, you know, three quarters of a decade since then. But we are still thinking of that exhaustive analysis as a really important piece to keep in mind as we're studying what our investment needs are. Another thing to consider here is that those, a lot of those projects have been addressed. They might not have been addressed in a huge, sort of bid-required capital improvements capacity, but they might have been chipped away at a little bit through our repair and maintenance budget to keep our buildings healthy and in good working order. And so that's where we say, uh, progress updated. A big progress update at the high school, for instance, which wasn't in that initial report, is the cafeteria, which taken as a, an, a new part of the building will actually help the facilities condition index. So that's the next one here. What percentage of a building's replacement value has been consumed? So when a building has a gym that needs to be replaced and a, and, you know, HVAC systems that need to be replaced and a cafeteria and, and kitchen that need to be replaced, you're starting to, you know, see that each one of those things is stacking up to whatever the cost of a whole school would be. And at some point, there's a tipping point where it actually becomes cheaper, more, more cost-efficient, I should say, to, to look at building replacement versus building repair. According to the state, I think, you know, in that like 60 to 80%, and there's a lot of debate in there, so everybody can sort of make up their own mind. But in that 60 to 80% used range is where the, the tip generally starts to occur. The next measuring stick that we're looking at is architect-led analysis, right? So we're, we're working with TruX Collins Architects in this engagement. And it's great having architects at the table because they think in a way that nobody else thinks in the whole process. They see space in a way that nobody else sees it in the whole process. And they can help us look at a map and a survey of user data and unlock some hidden efficiencies and, and space optimization strategies that nobody else in the process would be able to, to do. And so we're really enjoying having the architects at the table to, to do that kind of space utilization magic. And, and they've, they've been helpful in that regard so far. The last one is the one that probably is the most closely tied to the school board, and that's our district quality standards. So district quality standards can mean different things in different contexts. You know, we have the, the state's new rules for district quality standards that are being implemented in FY '26 for the first time. Those don't have a lot of teeth to them, especially in the facilities realm, as far as, you know, the state coming by to, to check in on what your standards are and how well you're upholding them. But it does start to, to speak to how, as a district, we create policy, such as our class size policy, and then how we take that policy and use that as a lens to view a classroom. How many students does our policy say we can put in this classroom? Okay. Now, if we max out our classroom, how many square feet is that per student? Okay, so now we have a square footage per student. Can we take that square footage per student and carry it across every school in the district? Or do we have certain schools or certain classrooms that, that could not hold the policy-generated square footage per student? So it's another angle that we're looking at it and it's, you know, important to, to fold those in and, and look at them across all the buildings. Any questions on that before we go to the next one? So as far as the timeline of process B overview, this is very rough because everything is kind of in flux right now and, and it's the summertime, so we're trying to figure out how we're gonna get a lot of work done over the next couple of months and add more to it while everybody is, is on break. But nevertheless, I think that this is a rough outline of how process B would sort of unfold relative to where process A is, uh, goal-wise. So A, the input and analysis stage and then the design and development stage are really where we supply information and meet with the architects and give them everything they need, and then we hand it off. And after the handoff, they go to their design team and come up with, with products, concepts and cost estimates that are gonna be useful to us as the finished product. So we would be sort of, you know, a month out from getting process B started. We would probably start chipping away at that realistically in the end of June as, as school finishes up. But bringing that input and analysis stage in and then after that, handing the architects what we find for process B and having that design and development stage kind of culminate at the end of the calendar year. With that in mind, we, we would sort of retain our capacity to steer all of this work towards a potential town meeting day referendum of some sort. I don't know if that gives us enough time to get a full bond through, but we'll see.
Should you choose to. I mean, our legal requirement is to come up with a capital improvement plan, right? So what, what we choose to do about that is another thing. And, and I think, you know, concurrently as the policy committee thinks through some C-30 things and, you know, as we, as we continue onward in this process, the, the legal requirement is that you have a, a plan based on, you know, where you are right now. That plan can adjust as you, as you have different policy considerations that are made, as you, you know, if you were to make big policy changes, those changes take some time to implement, you know? So it, it isn't that, that, that those things happen. So it isn't that those things happen overnight. And I think in the superintendent's goals, it lists really kind of identifying, okay, well, what are the top 10 impactful student projects that are really important to consider in this process? And this, what we're learning is that, you know, if the people from the architects' team are working with Bruce around the input and analysis to make the facilities' condition index up to date, well, they might as well be doing that with all the schools at once. There are some efficiencies to be gained in that process. And that is, that's become clearer to us, I think, as we've gotten into the discussions, you know, as a whole, so.
So this is kind of the framework that Process B is going to happen in. And, you know, we're still waiting for the board green light in order to formally begin that engagement. For the sake of keeping track of the price tag, from the initial TRUex bid, $90,100 was the cost estimate for B. And we would be recommending that the capital reserves were used in order to pay for this portion of the capital improvement process.
Questions, wondering, thoughts? Ellen?
I have three questions, so I'll just say them out loud and then let you tell me anything you can, Matt. The first is on the EdSpecs, which seems like a lot of information to go through, just how every space is used. I assume you don't know exactly, but do you have any inkling about how that information will be presented in a final report? I mean, will it be like a room-by-room breakdown of how the spaces are used? Or is it going to be a little bit at a higher level? I'm just trying to, everything else on that chart feels pretty concrete, even in the description of what it might look like. But that was one where I was thinking that could be a pretty huge amount of information to organize. So I'm just curious if you know more about that. And then on the district quality standards, for you or for Wendy, really, do you have a sense of other policies or considerations that might factor into that? And specifically, I'm wondering if geography and transportation is going to be a factor. I don't know that we have a specific policy on that, but knowing that the last facilities' master planning process, a lot happened kind of after that 500-page report around the actual physical locations of schools and what that meant from a transportation and access standpoint. So I'm curious if that would be part of it, or if there are other policies beyond class size that rise to mind as far as things that they would use for the district quality standards.
That was two.
It's sort of three, because I'm wondering other policies, and then if one of those is transportation or geography-related.
Got it.
So the first one, remember what the first question was?
The EdSpecs. How that would be broken down.
The short answer is, I don't know how they would break it down. The longer answer is that from what we've seen in our first few posts, questionnaire, survey meetings with the architects, that there's a lot of, there are a lot of tools that they use to do this work. We have spreadsheets that sort of chart every single room in a building, how many FTE are assigned to the building, to the room, what it's used for. And that becomes sort of the first layer. On top of that, now the principals sort of hoping to supply the nuance of how those FTEs within each space interact with each other. Here's where, you know, first grade is, here's where second grade is, here's where third grade. Sometimes these people need to, you know, work with these people. We can't do this because of this. And, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of detail work that goes on in there. I think that the summary of that work would be found in a final report. I don't know that every, you know, every little nuance would be in a final. But that would be up to TRUex.
One of the things I can say that feels very different from the reported other process is that, you know, EdSpecs that were utilized in the other process were kind of an ideal, right? Like here's a...
The model school.
Yeah, sort of model school, and then we'll kind of see where we are relative to that. I think the tenor of where this is going is more, what are some things that feel real about what we know about how to create a conducive learning environment? For example, you know, no one should be receiving specialized services in a space that is not a private space, right? You know, like that's not an EdSpec, the way that architects think about EdSpecs, but it's very much a specification that our, certainly our building leaders and our teachers, and probably our family members and community members would say, oh yeah, that's actually really important, you know? So I think as this is evolving, what we're actually thinking about is what is the programming that we know as, in our shared values, has come to light as what we are committed to doing? And what does that tell us about our facilities? So if we're choosing, you know, 50 square feet per student, you know, at a certain age, is that because in that room there are small group spaces as well as a large group space? And so therefore, our programming needs to meet that. So I think there's, that some of this is, it's very organic, and it's coming together around what is the facility that delivers the programming that we've come to value and feel is important, and is leading to this well-educated, you know, group that we're thinking about? What is the best of that and what's important about that? So we'll have some technical pieces to that, have some educational leadership pieces to that, you know? And we'll see kind of where that goes. It feels very different, I think, from the way that it was done previously.
I think there's also kind of an organic, you know, iterative process going on for the second question that you had, which was the sort of the policy that might be used to decide ed-quality standards or district quality standards. And I think, you know, this is something that, you know, board policy was an example that we used here, but it could also be that the District Leadership Council meets and, you know, takes a look at, you know, what does high-quality program look like at one of our schools? And, you know, how do we say like, okay, well, that's the standard? It's not about measuring ourselves against some sort of prototype outside of the district that exists somewhere in our imagination. But it's about saying, what does it mean to do something really well here? And how can we ensure that that opportunity is provided by every facility so that every kid can have that same opportunity?
There might be some policy pushes based on the things that we learn, you know? For example, how to stabilize a building. And so, you know, there are some facilities pieces that if we're going to commit to a certain layout and doing a certain layout well, then this is the enrollment that generally we need, you know, in that building to avoid, well, this year, this is the first grade, and next year, that'll be the first grade. And, you know, people are moving classrooms, so there are operational inefficiencies. So there may be some policy things that come up that relate to that, but we're still in the early stages of discovering those things.
Will geography or location be a factor in considering any of that?
So far, it's been more, what is the possibilities within this facility? And what does that look like, you know? For example, you know, at Mary Hogan, if you've watched the Facilities Committee meeting around that, you know, there's a stabilization that comes from four sections of each grade. So it's thinking about, okay, well, if we establish four sections of each grade, that's approximately 50 more students, you know? So let's assume we have that, and the building is operating efficiently in that way. What does that look like? Where are those 50 students need to come from in order to do that? Is a, it might be a policy question, or we might have a whole lot of housing built, you know, shortly. I'm not sure. But, you know, there might be some policy pieces, but we're not looking at, if this happens, then we'll get 50 more students, and then we'll need to do the following. We're looking at, what is the best way to maximize this facility, you know? And what do we know about that? So I hope that helps.
Other questions? Steve?
Yeah, I guess, I don't know if it's completely in response to your questions, Ellen, but one, two things, I guess. One was just, in the last process, it very much seemed like comparing everything to an ideal was not terribly productive. There's a reality that the district has so many buildings. Those are what we're working with. How do we work within those and see how we can utilize what we have? The other piece that, you know, in terms of the time to figure out what each space is used for, being on the Facilities Committee, what I think is very important and a very important outcome from this process is not just a report from an architect saying, this is what you can do, but making sure there's an opportunity for staff who work in these buildings and facilities to explain what is being done and what already is successful and exists. And so I really would like to see an outcome that kind of blends both of those. It will take staff time, certainly, but I just think it's important. I think that'll let us end up with the best kind of end product, the most useful end product, in my mind. Because otherwise, a report that's solely from an architect only has so much value as far as influencing decision-making and informing decision-making, for me.
Students, by the way, typically get involved in that at the concept stage, you know? So when there's a concept of, here's a thought, you know, about where this building could go, should these investments been made? Now we're in the visuals, and that's a lot easier, you know, for people to digest that have not necessarily had the time to look through all kinds of building plans and maps and so on and so forth, which can take up some background to understand. So, you know, staff can get involved at that initial piece, and then students general kind of come around, you know, at the concept stage.
Other questions? Seeing none. And Laura, I'm sorry if, definitely let me know if you have some.
Double beep.
At this point, could we have a motion? There's a couple recommended motions in the materials that were submitted. Is someone able, Jason or whatever, to do a motion? And we can do more discussion once we have a motion.
I move that the board authorize the use of capital reserves funds to engage TRUex Collins in capital improvement planning process for Process B in a amount not to exceed $90,100.
Because I have a second.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Suzanne. Other discussion? Go ahead.
A question is, how are capital reserves doing at the moment? And where would this lead us? Or leave us, I guess? Okay. I assume this is not like, you know, going to put too big of a dent in it.
No, I think we have between $3 and $4 billion.
Steve?
But I would point out that's $90,000 that's not being used in building. Usually use that capital reserve to engage the improvements. And so it's $90,000 that will not go into any building directly.
I hope it's smart money that ensures that other money is spent well. That's the rationale related to that. And I think also, you know, it's training ourselves as we kind of move along in the budgeting process, that when we have additional expenses, you know, we need to not necessarily assume that the general fund is going to absorb those, you know, in that way. So we need to just be really careful about that, and if we, and just think well.
Other discussion? Go ahead, Ron.
I think we've tried to get at this from a couple of directions already, but I just want to kind of reiterate it or put it in slightly different terms. Can we be sure that TRUex Collins will approach this evaluation in the perspective of a great deal of uncertainty about is there going to be a minimum student size for schools going forward under the state legislation, for example? And so I guess that's a question for people who are more in the weeds than I am, whether it's the Simmons Committee or Policy Committee, or kind of Matt and Dr. Baker have been working with that group. But is that something we can kind of ask them to think specifically about? I think that's sort of what I got from Ellen's head of questions as well and from Steve. So I think that's, I guess, kind of want to reiterate that apprehension that I'm feeling that we're thinking about and investing in things that we don't know very much about their future in some ways.
I think the more information we have, the better positioned we'll be to handle uncertainty and determine how to best move forward. And, you know, I think the last report provided information against an ideal as opposed to where are we in what we're thinking about? And, you know, if we're creating a plan that's required by law, that we say these are capital investments that we feel are valuable, it doesn't mean that under any political context, they would be accomplished. So it's not, it doesn't require us to state that. And it might not be, I don't know when the right time to state that would be. I guess, you know, we're all kind of moving along that continuum together. And what we want to make sure to do is position ourselves that we have the information so that we can work with it well in short order. You know, that's probably the best, the thing that's best for us.
Ellen?
The thing I would say, the ideal that was invoked, that we've talked about, the model school, I think a downside of that is that the model school doesn't exist. I remember at a public meeting asking, have you ever seen this school? And the person from TRUex Collins said, once, in Maine. So was it, it was an ideal that truly didn't, you know, it was really hard to figure out, like, what are we even trying for? So yes, making this relative to our standards and what feels real, as Steve and Matt are saying. The thing that was nice about it is it was transparent what the criteria was, right? It was clear, like, we're aiming for this. The board, as I understand, had decided on that criteria, and so that was all there. And part of what I'm just interested in how this plays out in the process is how we're defining these things that are less clear-cut in their measurement. That's why I asked about transportation. I appreciate that we're talking about individual facilities, but as we talk about a capital improvement plan and understanding that prioritization and decisions will be part of that plan, understanding the geographical implications of where these buildings are located and what that means for transportation for different families, I think is an important piece of information. But we can cross that bridge when we're making decisions. I just, all of these things happen, the process happens in isolation, but the decisions happen comprehensively. So it'll just be interesting to see how the information comes together.
Others? Are we ready for the question? We have a motion on the table. All those in favor of recommending that, okay, let me start over. All those in favor to authorize the use of $90,100 from the capital reserves for the purpose of funding Process B indicate by saying aye.
Actually, I believe it's up to...
Up to.
Up to. It's not to exceed $90,100.
Not to exceed, thank you. I should have drunk that now, as we were... Not to exceed $90,100 from the capital reserves for the purpose of funding Process B. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, it's approved.
Thank you. Thanks, Matt. That concludes the superintendent's report.
Excellent.
Okay. Next, under reported the chair, just a couple of items. First is just to talk a little bit about the summer board schedule. There is no board meeting scheduled for the month of July. And, you know, some committee meetings may decide to continue to meet, that's fine. But the board as a whole won't be meeting. And as part of that, one of the other things that we had quite a bit of discussion last year was what to do... was what to do with approval of the bills that we did earlier. And after quite a bit of discussion, when I went back and looked at the minutes, we basically decided that, no, we have two board members that sign off on the bills so that the bills can be paid. And there can then be a report out at our first board meeting in August, and that there didn't really need to be any special action taken. So, we didn't take any action last year. So, I'm assuming that's fine for this year as well. So, Suzanne and Jason, you know, as long as you guys can continue to look at the bills in a timely fashion, that's awesome. Next up is talking about the board retreat. And thank you, and I see while I've been sitting here, I've gotten a couple more that I haven't been able to look at, trying to schedule the board retreat. It appears that it's a tough couple weeks for many of us. At this point, I barely, the last time I looked, and it doesn't count the last couple that came in. And so, I haven't been able to, you know, see what, you know, those numbers look like. It really was tough, you know, where we were getting...
There's eight on the fourteenth.
There's eight on the fourteenth.
So, there's seven on the sixth.
Thank you.
Seven on the seventh, seven on the thirteenth, and eight on the fourteenth.
Yeah, which is lower than I would like to see. It's an important training. It's going to, I think, help us in this whole process of community engagement and moving forward with our facilities, planning, and any kind of bond work that we may have to do. So, I'm wondering what we want to do here. I'm thinking it's a little low for that period of time, you know, the number of people that said that they could join. And some of the ones that did say were kind of like, "Well, tentative if I have to, you know, I could be there." And I was counting those as in the total.
So, I didn't count those. So, I did not, wait, yes, it does count those.
Yeah.
You could use your first meeting in August as a board retreat, as an alternative.
Yep. So, that's the eleventh. And I know a couple folks are going to be away, but in general, is that something that most people, you know, I don't think we're getting a hundred percent of everyone. But if we did use the eleventh, our board, normal board time, and dedicated it to the retreat, and started it early with lunch or dinner brought in.
At least by this list, by the comments, you're going to have at least four board members that won't even be there on the eleventh.
Yeah.
Are we talking August now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's my birthday.
Oh, we'll have a birthday cake. Yeah, we'll have a birthday cake. What better thing to do on your birthday? So, what do folks think? You know, I really would like to get as many of us as possible. I mean, the other option is to look like one week later, and I'm not sure, because my poll didn't go out that far.
But is he even available that next week for kids?
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, okay.
I feel like if four people, the first date offered had five people missing, and if the eleventh is going to have four people missing, I feel like that's still a lot of people.
Yeah.
So, maybe we look further out.
Other, after the fourteenth of August, I have to do some medical leave and wouldn't be able to attend for like the following month, probably.
Okay.
In person, I'll zoom in for the meetings.
Yeah. Mary Heather?
I guess the other thing to consider is the timeline for some of this facilities work and the efforts that we want to do with respect to community engagement, that it might be better to shoot for some earlier training to incorporate into that work. I mean, it seems like we're going to be missing a handful of folks, no matter how we slice it. And I'm reluctant to push it off to get everyone and miss our opportunities to use that work.
Right. Yeah, and I wouldn't push it off long. I would, like, the option would be if we made it like the eighteenth or nineteenth, would that make it better for folks?
I'll have to zoom in. I'm in Maine.
Yeah, I'll be gone during a childhood college.
Yeah.
I'll also be gone. Again, I mean, it could be that almost anywhere, you know, like you're saying, you lose, you gain four, you lose three, but...
So, it sounds like I can use the results that we've already gathered, and we will select the best option and...
And record it.
And record it, and, you know, try to figure out how we can help bring those along that weren't able to participate, because that's my, you know, my main concern. I want everyone to feel like they're part of it and can participate. Is that fair? Okay, so, I will take a better, you know, I'll take a look at it. I'm not going to do it real time, based on the new ones that have come in. And if you haven't, you know, responded, please do so as quickly this evening if you can, so we can iron this date out and select the date. Okay. Any other questions on that? In more detail, we'll be coming about, you know, the kind of the content of the retreat. We will be, Dr. Baker and I will be setting up a meeting and sitting down with David and kind of form, you know, planning out the whole thing, and we'll report back on that as well. Okay. Next up on the agenda is reported the board. And before I get to the first item there, I just wanted to point out that Tricia asked me to include the newsletter and the meeting materials so folks can take a look at it. And if, in fact, folks have comments, should they respond back to you?
Yeah, so, it's very much just first draft to give you guys an idea of the type of information that we are planning on sending out in our quarterly report. There's still a good deal of wordsmithing and editing that needs to happen. But if you feel like we're way off course, or if there's something you feel like we have missed, please let me know ASAP. We meet on Wednesday to wordsmith and get things ready to go out.
And Mary Heather?
When are you hoping to get it out the door?
Hoping to get it, we're hoping that we'll do the work on Wednesday and get it sent by Friday.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
And Steve?
You sent out a request for meeting chairs...
Yep.
To have blurbs or updates. You're intending to have those in there as well?
Yes, if you can get those to me by Wednesday, that's awesome.
Thank you.
And you can send those same blurbs, maybe as your reported board. Two for one, right? That'd be great. Okay, the next item on the agenda, we had a request from Jamie to basically put this motion on the board. And I just worded it as a motion to rescind the board decision to accept the flagpole donation at M U S with the stipulation that only the American flag be flown on that pole, which was what I captured from the minutes that we had there. So, I am, you know, going to turn it over to someone to make this motion. I just want to reiterate, as we go into this process with discussion, that we be respectful to each other for our, folks' different points of view, and listen to each other, and, you know, basically not focus on individual motives and really focus on kindness and being supportive of each other and our community as we go into this, okay? So...
Okay, thanks Barb. So, I said the last meeting, I was going to make this motion. I thought the text that Barb provided was fine. I created a little, a couple reasons I wanted to make this motion. Is that okay if I...
Why don't you make the motion? And then, you'll have, if this motion is seconded, then you get the first comments.
Okay, thank you. So, I'll make a motion to rescind the motion that we made on May 12th to accept the flagpole donation at MUHS with the stipulation that only the American flag would be flown on that pole.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second discussion. Now, Jamie, you get the first...
First at bat?
Yeah.
Okay, I just made a few points, and I'll try to be brief, and I'll try to summarize here. I thought the first one is that I thought the stipulation that we separate the flags was inappropriate. I think that there's, I don't want to be too grandiose here, but there's like, I think separating flags, well, whatever those flags might be, there's the American flag, the BLM flag, the pride flag, the IB flag, the Vermont State flag, denigrates all of them, actually, because they belong together. Like, the whole, the promise of American democracy is that those things are together, and separately, you can't fulfill any parts of those, of that promise. And I think that the move to separate them is, might have that effect. I think, you know, it also, to some extent, undermines our stated commissions, our stated commitments to embracing that diversity that is symbolized in all kinds of flags in the goals of our strategic plan of increasing a sense of belonging wherever possible. Second, we have a flagpole policy that was really not consulted. I thought this new flagpole would fall outside of and sort of circumvent the board's policy and procedure there. And I think that that, this idea or request, whatever you want to call it, should be considered by the policy committee, perhaps a legal review of F-27 the same way our public use of school facilities policy was debated, which took quite a long time. Third, the process that we decided that motion was, I thought, irresponsibly quick. It did not consider a lot of the complexities that have come up since then. It did not engage relevant stakeholders, didn't consult our existing policies. We barely took any time at all to ask important questions that are procedural, political, logistical. And I think it should have come with more deliberation and more community engagement from high school folks, you know, most of all. Third, I guess, or last, I guess, I don't feel like we made a decent argument that this supports our students, our mission, with this condition about what flags to fly and how you weigh. I feel like that has not been part of our discussion. That is usually part of most decisions that we make. So, in general, I feel like we made the decision in haste without due diligence, and there's no shame in changing our minds. I think it shows that we are careful, we're thoughtful, we're accountable. And I think when properly considered, this motion that we made undermines our mission and was not given due oversight by the board, so I moved to rescind it.
Others? Other discussion? Go ahead Jess.
Yeah, I wanted to share why I'll be voting to rescind it. And I brought some notes, and I don't know if I'll be brief, because I did so much research on this, y'all. I've watched a lot of meeting recordings all the way back to November, okay? And my biggest reason for voting to rescind it is because I feel like this decision was made in haste, and there was so much information not brought to the board on the May 12th meeting that was definitely in the public eye, like, it was in the facilities committee meetings. But I guess my understanding, I didn't think it was an expectation of all board members to watch all committee meetings before every board meeting. So, I'm operating under the assumption that, like, we will get the pertinent information. Yeah, so, I just found out last week that there was a written letter and proposal about this. And I guess I would have assumed that we would have been given that in our board materials when we were supposed to take action. And then, some other kind of peripheral information, like, there's already three flagpoles at the high school between the football field and the baseball field, where the American flag flies on its own. So, that's already happening. And, yeah, that, this is also going to trigger either moving our existing one flagpole in front of the circle or purchasing another second one to make it more aesthetically pleasing, which, again, is just like, these are all kind of like implications of a decision that we were voting on. I was also interested that in the November facilities committee meeting, when this was, I think, first brought up, as far as I could find, that the facilities committee saw that this actually wasn't a facilities issue. But then, the majority of those conversations happened in the facilities committee meeting. So, yeah, I'm just kind of trying to follow the information. So, yeah, all of that, I just feel like it was made in haste, and that when we were asked to make a decision, there was a lot of information missing that could have impacted people's decisions, or at least understanding kind of like the full breadth of the proposal and all of its implications. Yeah, and I think kind of aside from all of that, right, there's like all of these layers of questions, right? So, there's like, does the board think that the American flag should be flown on a pole of its own? Is like one question, and then it's like, if so, should that pole come from a donation? Or should we pay for it ourselves because it's something that we think should happen? And if we do think it should come from a donation, should that donation have stipulations? Is another question. And should those stipulations be in conflict with our flag policy, which in a facilities committee meeting that was discussed, and there was a sense that it wouldn't? I think that it does, because if we don't have a policy saying this, that the American flag gets flown on its own, if someone asks to fly another flag for a temporary amount of time and wants it on the same pat flag as the pole, as the American flag, we don't have a policy that says, "We're going to say no to that." So, we could say yes to that, which would be in conflict with the stipulation of this pole. So, I just feel like we voted without kind of going through all of that and with missing a lot of information. So, yeah, I'm going to vote to rescind the decision first.
Okay, others? Ron?
I'm going to talk about this from the perspective of public engagement, which I've been, been working on as part of my work on the communications and engagement committee. I'm also going to be voting to rescind the decision that was made on May 12th. And I think we need to trust the public to tell us when we need to be having a larger conversation. And perhaps not entirely unequivocal, but it's been very close to unequivocal the opposition to our decision. And I respect the fact that we need to kind of welcome the public to make initiatives and to respond to those. And I think we do need to consider them and to think about the people who will be seeing, for example, the consequences of decisions we make, for example, flying the American flag on its own, and to really take into account their desires and their preferences, which means, in my opinion, students above all, who are the people that kind of, I took on this work to support and to listen to. And, you know, this is, again, part of a larger discussion, but I'll just say very briefly that I think it may also demand of us that we rethink how we do public comment, how we schedule the flow of our meeting so that the public can be, doesn't have to wait an hour and a half to hear the discussion that they've come to hear. And I respect that the things that, kind of, the way we do things has been organized to get us through the agenda and to keep us on schedule. But I think that that's not the only value we need to be considering when you think about how the board does its work.
Tricia?
I have a question about kind of path forward or, you know, options going forward. So, if this motion was to be passed and our previous decision was rescinded, it sounds a lot like people are hoping that the motions rescinded, or the decisions rescinded, which opens... which opens the door to more information and more decision making. What would need, like what would those next steps be? Because hypothetically, it could be rescinded and then we never talk about it again and the, the donation doesn't happen, right? So if it's voted to be rescinded, how, what would be the path forward to, you know, getting community input and seeing if this is something that would want to be pursued, I guess, if that made sense?
Yeah, and I haven't thought a lot about it, but I think at a minimum, we would have to see if the person who was donating the pole was still interested. I think it would kind of start there.
Yep.
Obviously, the board helped prioritize what we focus on.
Yep.
So depending on the desire of the board, the whole board, right, the majority of the board, depending on the funding source being there or not, it could be taken up or not, right? So I'm going to be vague because it is really the desire of the board, right? It's not the desire of me. I'm here to support the work of the board.
Yeah.
But not say, well, this is what we're doing, our priorities, that kind of thing.
I think, you know, for what it's worth, I do feel like, looking back on it, I, I feel like we did make a decision in haste, you know, I feel like I, well, a lot of information has, has come to light that I wish I'd known going into making a decision. I don't know, I'm not at a point where I can say we made the right decision or the wrong decision, but I can definitely say I feel like we made that decision too quickly. And so I guess my, my side of things is, you know, I, I feel like rescinding our, our decision is a legitimate path forward, but I feel like I don't want that to be the end of everything, right? I, I am curious as to how the students feel about this and, you know, how it works with poly, you know, all the things that, that our fellow board members have brought up. So I, I guess my, my wonder right now is just if, if this is rescinded, it seems like a very black and white sort of thing. Well, we're, we're taking our decision off the table and that's then the end.
I'm pretty sure. Okay, Jason, go ahead.
So not the last facilities committee meeting, but the one prior to that, Dr. Steele commented that she would be interested and willing to lead that conversation with the high school community and foster that broader dialogue. So that's one path forward. I don't know if Dr. Baker wouldn't want to put that on Dr. Steele's priority list or not, but.
Well, I think my, my side, I, I understand that and I remember her saying that, I think it's a great idea, but if the board says, we're rescinding our, our decision, we're not going to accept this donation, then does that require an immediate motion saying, you know, I move that the board consider, reopen consideration of this, this donation, you know, that's kind of what I'm getting at here.
And what I'm trying to look up is, can you, and I think you can, but I don't want to misspeak, to amend a motion to rescind, so that you could add some additional, but I want to make sure.
Right, yes.
And go ahead, Ellen.
I feel like an example of how we've done things, not exactly like those in the past, but the board has directed committees to look into things. And the, I think it's a mistake to go back and ask an individual to continue to make a request, that, that if the board decides this is a topic worth investigating, should we or should we not fly the American flag on its own pole? Removing the specifics of a donation and a stipulate, all those things, if we just sort of take this as a, as a matter of policy. I think the board could direct that, answering that question or bringing information to help the board answer that question to a committee, which could work with, you know, Caitlin, who could work, you know, like could decide other sources of information to bring back, not to make a recommendation as a committee, but to, to sort of lead the work of gathering it. We've done that in the past. At least I know the policy committee has received, I don't know if it's directives or requests, but we treat them like directives to kind of dig deep into an issue, right, and sort of investigate something. So that's also something we might think about doing here.
Yeah, Mary Heather, go ahead.
I guess I, I also think it's probably important for us to just look holistically as well as at current conditions. Jamie noted there, there is a flag at the high school near the football field that currently has an American flag flying on its own. And then, you know, obviously elsewhere, we have flagpole, flying an American flag with the state flag. And I think it is important for us, if we are to truly be kind of objective in this decision-making process, to contemplate the degree to which the, the way it was presented influenced the reaction to our decision-making. I don't disagree that it was made, you know, we had one discussion in one evening about it as a full board and that could have been a more open process. But I think, you know, and I, I can't help but go back to on the 12th, the sort of thinking or the exercise that Ellie kind of walked us through with her perspective in that if it, if it had been brought for, for a different flag, if the request had been brought to fly a different flag on its own, so that, you know, the American flag is on its own, you know, to what degree would the community response and the board response have such a negative reaction? And I, I think, you know, if we look at our flag policy, this request doesn't necessarily violate the policy. The policy says, you know, a flagpole and what board decides to fly on that flagpole is an action of the board. And if the board decides to fly a flag that it, you know, decides is consistent with its mission, it may do so. And that, and that's pretty much it. So I'm not advocating one way or the other. All I'm saying is that when we walk away from this, there needs to be consistency and it needs to be grounded in kind of our policy and how we're operating the rest of our facilities and be careful about an emotional reaction driving, you know, and our perception about the, the motivation behind it, taking us on, on a direction that prevents us from really looking at it, you know, kind of objectively. So I don't, I don't disagree with things that folks have brought up. I personally, you know, this was brought up and one of the first questions that was asked was, what's, what's flying now? Like people didn't even know. People didn't even know that the BLM flag hasn't been flying at the high school for over a year, for like three years. And so to me, the sort of anger is a little bit misplaced. And perhaps a more constructive conversation could have been, how do we use symbols or signage to make sure that folks in our community know that this is a welcome space for all? And I know, you know, I'm thinking a little bit about how the hospital handled it. The hospital went through a process with their board. They decided, you know what, we're not going to mess with the government flagpoles, but what we are going to do is put signage out on our main sign. And that's how we were, we're going to convey how we're welcome to all. And, you know, I think that's, I think that's an option. It, it concerns me, the narrative and the direction that this conversation is taken is that there's no conclusion that we can reach other than flying, you know, an American flag separate from other flags is, is somehow contributing to oppression. I'm not sure how I feel about that, but the way the conversation had been going really felt like, well, that's, that's the conclusion. And, and it's, I need, I just, I feel like we need to make space for some back and forth about that. So I, I'm not sure how I feel. I know how I voted and I voted with the perspective of, you know, having gone through military service funerals and, and also the belief that, you know, that flag is supposed to be the roof under which all of us stand. And, and while I know that's really, really, a concept that is taking a lot of, of hits, I still, I know, I know there's folks who feel that way and I would like to be able to feel that way. And I guess my hope is that we can figure out some kind of solution that we can all agree on to make sure that folks, everyone feels welcome. So I guess that's all I'll say is just, let's look at our consistency, let's make sure we're being grounded in that. And I, I don't know the right answer.
So what, I know Jess, you hit your hand up, but since everyone gets an opportunity to speak first, so Ellie, I did see Ellie, yes?
I just want to speak to this because I am going to be rescinding, voting to rescind it, which is different than the way I voted before. And, but I want to be clear that it's about the process is my biggest concern here. And I think it's a, it's a symptom of maybe a bigger issue that has happened many times on the board where I felt like I've made, been asked to make a vote and then found out later there was a lot more depth to the, to the topic than was maybe presented at the time. And unless a board member has been keyed in and maybe following some of the committee meetings that they're not a part of and such that may not have that context. And I feel like this is one of those examples that happened. You know, it would have been really important to know that this conversation had started more than six months ago and that there had been lots of thoughts and discussions about it previously. And so, you know, I also think it's important to point out that the status quo of the way the flagpoles are at places that have resources to put them up is usually three, you know, the government buildings and such, that's, that's what is done unless, you know, I'm assuming that the reason we don't do that here or didn't in the beginning is because of three sources and thinking it wouldn't make sense to spend that much money, three flagpoles when we could do one. So it's, you know, the idea of the three flagpoles isn't the problem in my mind, but it is the context in which this came up and how it was presented to us and, you know, and that's why I think that we made a hasty choice before.
Tora?
I just want to say that I remember Leonard coming to a board meeting quite a while ago, like over a year ago, indicating his desire to fundraise for this purpose. And I don't remember there being any uproar about it at the time. I'd like to second everything that Mary Heather said, and she said it much more eloquently than I think I could have, in that I have, I have a problem seeing having more than one flagpole as being inherently non-inclusive. And I just would really caution us from making that assertion. That being said, I am very interested in what the student body has to say in terms of their flagpole for their school, or flagpoles as it may be for their schools, and would very much welcome hearing more about that.
Anyone else like to make a comment? Steve?
Okay. So the process, as people have pointed out, may have seemed rushed, but it did go through the proper channels and the facilities committee did fully vet this request. I think that the things that have happened since then have focused around two different and what I believe are very disturbing trends. The first one is misrepresentation. I believe that, that the idea that the entire community is in an uproar about this is a misrepresentation because I would say that people said that it was universally against having that flagpole. And I would point out that 90% of those people that were upset were coming from Waybridge. So it does not feel like we have heard from the entire community. It also feels like Mr.
Let's be careful, Steve.
Point of order, yeah. Let's focus on the merits of the request.
That the, that the initial request was misrepresented. And it's been misrepresented in a lot of ways, both in the letters that we received and the community reaction in some ways. I believe that there have been absolute mistakes, saying that this was about not flying or taking away the right to fly the Black Lives Matter flag. It did not in any way do that. It is consistent with the flag policy and the flag policy does not say that you only have to fly the Black Lives Matter flag or other issues' flags with the American flag. Does not say that either. And to say that it is, that it represents the feelings of all the people in the community, I think is a mischaracterization because there are people that feel that the American flag is special. I am not one of them. I believe that it is a symbol, just like anything else. And I believe that it is being disrespectful, hearing the community input from people that are not in agreement with some of the people that are on.
Steve, that's out of here. I'm sorry, you can continue, but that is, the community has their ability to state what they want to say and, and you're.
That's fine.
Yeah, so it's really the merits of whether or not we rescind or not, and it falls down to, do we have one dedicated pole to the American flag and another pole to fly other flags as we see fit? So please keep it.
So I will say that if we do vote to rescind, and I will not be voting to rescind, that we are giving in to the misrepresentation and the mischaracterization that I've outlined.
Any others? I need to make sure that everyone has an opportunity. Suzanne?
Just a question. Several people have asked about what the students and the teachers feel. And I know that Dr. Baker had put out that Dr. Steele had asked if the students and the teachers would work on this question. And I'm just wondering if, not trying to extend the debate or anything, but do you know or have you heard anything from what the students and the teachers were asked? Or is it too early and we should wait till next meeting to get their input and then make a decision? Or is it too early and we should wait till next meeting to get their input and then make a decision?
I think what I have become aware of so far is that there are some students who think that the American flag on its own pole is not an issue the board should be spending so much time talking about. There are some students who feel that it is a very important issue and that it should never be separated from any other flag. And there are other students who think that the American flag on its own pole would be great. So I don't think that those conversations are finished, but I think we've got a student body that probably represents all the perspectives that you do. That said, I, I think, you know, those are, those are in process, right? So that's not meant to be a representative definitive thought. That's just kind of a, so far, you know, here are sort of the things that are coming to the surface. I don't, I don't know if that's, you know, consistent with other students.
Is there anyone who hasn't had an opportunity to speak? Steve?
Yeah, I think I'm in a similar space to Mary Heather. I don't have a decision at the moment, just trying to level set. We are required to fly the American flag. That's not debatable. That is something we as a board, for at least of all the schools that we are responsible for, they are required to fly that flag. Tonight, I've heard confusion from board members, students, and community members about the way this decision was made. Heard it at all levels. I think this points, you know, if we step back from the flag and the flag pole, I think this may be a good space to talk about some of the challenges with accepting gifts. And especially when they come with specific behaviors tethered to them. And that may be something we need to explore as a board. For me, it is really concerning, you know, accepting a gift as a board is one thing. When there's a behavior tied to that acceptance, there's a lot more thought that needs to be put into that. And that, that's challenging for me. And then the other one I, I do want to recognize is this is a gesture by a community member who, obviously, the intent is a topic of debate. But this is a gesture by a community member who is attempting to, you know, share some level of support they feel with the district. I think we could talk a lot about that gesture. But for me, that's where it lies. The other thing, for me, a sign of good decision-making is silence once the decision is made. And that's not what I'm seeing tonight. There's a whole lot of conversation and this decision's been made. And that kind of flags things for me.
Thank you, Steve.
I know Jess is ahead of me.
Yeah, and have you spoken already?
I did, so I'm.
So I just want to make sure everyone has had an opportunity to speak. That.
That's everyone, but I think everyone has spoken.
Everyone has spoken but you.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you. So then Jess, and then Ellen.
You can go. Maybe I'll jump in line later.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think there's a lot of conversation about misrepresentation and narratives, but everyone's doing it, right? We've now heard a narrative about mostly people from Waybridge are emailing the board. I mean, everyone's telling stories. So we should all be careful of that. I've, I think if this is a conversation that the board wants to have, it should happen around, you know, not a single request, but the importance or the symbolism of flying the American flag on its own. I've done some really interesting reading around Department of Defense and Veterans Affairs and DFW guidance on how the American flag is flown. It, you know, its supremacy is, is the key is that it's, it's high, that it's the highest flag, not that it's alone, but that that is the, that's in statute. That's going back to the 20s and the 40s about how you, part of how you treat the American flag is that it's not flown upside down and that it's flown above other flags. And beyond that, we're talking about feelings. We are talking about people's personal beliefs around how you respect the American flag and what the American flag means to you. And if that's a conversation for the board to have, I think it could be rich and complicated and difficult. But that's not the conversation that happened before the decision was made to fly the American flag on its own at one location in our district by private donation. So, yeah, I think this process is, it's a really beautifully said statement by Steve Cash that silence maybe is a good indicator of either complicity or, you know, consensus. And I don't think we have it. And I think that this was a hasty process. If we decide that this is a really worthy engagement and discussion for the board, let's have that in a way that feels representative of the community and, and representative of the, the charged and larger issues that this question begs of us. And let's stop making assumptions about each other.
Okay, Jess, did you want to say anything?
No, it's okay.
Okay. Anyone else?
Jamie?
Jamie?
Yeah, I'll just say, as the person who made the motion, I think it was Tricia who asked about like, is this the end? Like, it, it feels not. Like, and my intention, or my hope in some ways, is that when there are important issues that we all care about, that we talk about them until we're done. And so if anything, I feel like this is an opening. Like, I feel like if, if people are interested in, people have a lot of feelings about this, right? I do, and a lot of other people do. I think that's great. And I feel like it's not something that should just stop. I, I do, obviously, I feel like we should change our decision, but we can make it better, right? Like, we can talk about it. Like, the governor flag pole policy is out of date, and I'm pretty sure it's wrong. You know, like, this, this whole thing about a symbol supporting our education and values and mission, I think may be almost unconstitutional. And so like, what are we, we have to, we should talk about that when we talk about this. And that has been on sort of, sort of the back burner of the policy committee's head for a while. But like, it's just like, there's so much messiness and hurry up that doesn't seem at all necessary. And I feel totally acceptable, as a person who brought this motion, to say like, yeah, let's pull the emergency brake. But also, like, if we want to have this discussion and it's something the board wants to talk about, then let's do it. I'm totally down for that personally. And I would invite anyone who wants to come into that conversation to be part of it. I just feel like, that's like, in the spirit of which I raised the rescind motion. So to Tricia's point, not just as like an ending or black and white or something, but to call attention to the sort of way the vote was made and that we should, if, if desired, consider, you know, reconsider, reconsider it at a certain time.
And, and early on, when Tricia was speaking, I was looking in my Robert's Rules very slow. Motion to rescind and amend a previously made motion is amendable. So I just put that out there for you to know. If for some reason you wanted to amend the motion as Jamie stated it. Or you can do other motions, you know, to delay it, to, you know, the whole kind of scheme of motions is available here.
Are you talking to me personally?
No.
No, generally.
Laura, Laura.
Laura has her hand up.
So could we, could we move to delay the vote on rescinding until we have heard more from the student body about their thoughts? Is that on the table or no?
That's a possible motion. You can table it until another time in the future. And it needs a second. And I believe a table, does it need two-thirds of the vote?
No.
Just a simple majority, okay?
Can I ask a question about that? Or Jesse, go. We're allowed to ask questions about that.
Sure.
They have no idea.
Yeah, I, well, I appreciate that, I just feel.
Well, let's first, we have, we haven't even put it out there yet. So if, in fact, if someone makes a motion to table it, there's room for discussion if, if it's second. There's no need to do discussion about it. If someone doesn't make a motion and it doesn't get seconded, just for time, right? But if, in fact, there is a second, then there's a period of discussion.
Sorry, I, my comment still stands aside from that, is that okay?
Okay.
Yeah, I think just hearing what people are saying about a community engagement, which is one of my favorite topics, I love that. And I think that like, the first question is like, does the board think that we want to spend time on the idea of flying an American flag on its own pole? And I guess like, I'm not, I don't know the answer to that for myself and also like for this whole board. But I just think that's something that I mentioned earlier, and I feel like that's important, like why we're not, I guess we're not talking about the specifics of this proposal, which is only confusing to me because it's a proposal. So I feel like it's confusing to not talk about the proposed idea and its reasoning. Yeah, I think, like, we wouldn't be having this conversation without that proposal. So I, I'm curious if people are so excited to have that conversation and spend our time doing that. So I think that, for me, that would be like the first question that we would answer if we vote to rescind this decision is like, do we want to keep talking about this and spending time on this? And who, is it the whole board? Are we putting together a student group? Like, I don't feel like it's valuable to just get a bunch of information from students, like, written out, right? Like, I would want some kind of mechanism for that conversation. Yeah, so I just, I love community engagement and I want us to like engage the community on things that like, we're really bought into. And this, before this proposal, I never heard anything from this board about buying a flag pole for the American flag. But maybe it's on people's minds now.
Mary Heather?
Yeah, I think sort of similarly, I'm, I'm kind of wondering a little bit about Laura's question about delaying and getting more feedback. But, but also, you know, maybe, maybe just amending it to, you know, maybe we rescind this decision and also take it, take up the matter of, you know, how do we as a board decide how we're going to display our, you know, invitation to welcome all? Or, you know, sort of a broader conversation, not specifically tied to a flag pole. I, I don't know, but I feel like Tricia does. Like, I, I don't want this, I mean, to be honest with you, in some ways, I personally was hoping like, oh, great, this will trigger us to fly the flag again. Or, you know, like, because it wasn't flying, you know, and we weren't talking about it. And so some ways, this did precipitate that, that consideration that I personally think is important. So I, like Tricia, don't want this to go away. But I also, like Jess, question, you know, do we want to spend our, our limited bandwidth discussing the flag pole as the only way? So.
Are you, would you like to make a motion to amend?
Yes, I guess I would. And if it doesn't get a second, that's fine. And, but it's an idea. And if it's a bad idea, no, no offense taken. But I guess I'll make a motion to amend the original motion to rescind, to include that language, but add, and have the board take up the matter of, well.
It's hard.
Yeah, what time is it? Yeah, it's almost nine.
Four, nine, yeah.
The flag pole?
Yeah, to take up the matter of, I don't know that I want it to be specific to the flag pole, but how to display symbols to welcome all at our community, at our schools. I'm not even really happy with that, though. So I apologize.
So looking for a second or no second?
Yes.
Can we repeat the?
Yeah, I'm scribbling. Yeah. Add to it, have the board take up the matter of how to, to display symbols of, and I think you said inclusion? Of welcome?
So, clarification. So it would be a motion to rescind the board decision to accept the flag pole donation at MUHS with the stipulation that only the American flag be flown on that pole? And to?
Have the board take up the matter of how to display symbols of welcome and inclusion, or to welcome and inclusion.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we have a motion. We need a second.
I would second that.
Okay. Now we can have discussion on the motion to amend. Okay, so Steve, you had your hand up, and then Ellie.
And I was gonna, I was going, and I don't know if I would make it now or if I would make it after this discussion is over. I would make a motion to table the entire issue until the board felt that they were ready to discuss it in a decision-making process, which is what this should be.
That's a big different motion.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I, it's not an amendment. So right now, we do have the amendment on. And once we clear the amendment.
Yeah, maybe sit on that.
Then you could come back. True, you guys make me work. Um, Ellie?
I'm feeling confused, like, a motion to rescind feels very different than an motion to take action. And like, I'm not sure they should be tied together at all. I think we should vote on this rescinding thing and then can introduce new motions. But it doesn't feel right that those two things are, both a rescinding and then an action-taking are tied together in one.
Right. And typically, when we do motions, we usually have warning that we're going to do those motions. So by tying it as an amendment to a motion that was warned, it basically ties it back to that, even though it feels a little clunky right now. It does feel a little clunky.
It does.
But.
Okay.
Yeah.
I agree, it's clunky. But I think that we should do the thing that Mary Heather just said that we should do. Like, talk about ways to welcome people, sounds like a good idea. And so I don't think it, it follows from the sentence I put in the motion, really. It doesn't, like, shouldn't be in the same sentence. But, you know, my version of Robert's Rules, there's, we have like friendly amendments where you can sort of attach things that don't contradict the spirit of the original amendment. I don't know if we do that here, but, and to me, the, what Mary Heather is talking about does not detract from the motion I'm bringing. But I do think adds a level of discussion that people seem interested in having that's about how we are welcoming people and all those things. And that, that conversation, I think, is great. And so I would consider her thing a friendly amendment if people thought that, that would be useful or interesting. Do we even have a friendly, I don't know. Like, where I work, that's what we do it, and I, I don't know.
Ellen has her hand up.
Okay. Ellen?
The other thing I'd say that I think is, just, whether it's like in the same motion or it's in the spirit of where we're going on that, I think of value to not delaying this or tabling this is that the, what the board passed on May 12th is, is enabling an individual to start raising money for this specific thing. And I think then presumably that process would continue or not? I, I don't know, I, I think we should sort of clean the slate and say, we're not moving forward with that right now because we're having a bigger conversation to then come back to whether or not that's the appropriate thing to do. I actually think that delaying and kicking the can on this without being really honest about the kind of conversation that we're going to have the way that this now friendly amendment or whatever would convey just feels disingenuous. So, yeah, I think it's a, it's, it's, it's clunky. But if we, if we can just get to the spirit of, we want to have the larger conversation that includes American flag and other representations and symbols of, of welcoming and inclusion and diversity. of welcoming and inclusion and diversity, then that sounds great.
Okay, um, were you first? It's that. I saw Steve.
As I sit here and I listen, um, it sounds like really there's numerous issues that need to be considered before we re reconsider the original request. That is the flagpole issue, the flagpole policy, gift policy. And then also, how do we want to see have our students as they arrive at their schools? How do we want them to feel welcomed and greeted? So there's really quite a bit that as we've all talked about it, everyone's mentioned a bit, you know, bits and pieces of it. And whoever mentioned the flagpole policy, it is, um, it never went through a lawyer and the lawyer has told us since the very first time we used it that we could end up in court, so it does need to go back through a lawyer. Um, so, but to me, just as I listen, if we're going to rescind, we do have quite a bit of work, which we've already said, we didn't want to spend a lot of time on this, but it brings up numerous things that do need to be addressed.
Any other comments on the motion to amend? And Steve?
Yeah, so I believe, being still fair fairly new at this, that I am in support of the motion to amend, um. You know, I think it's important for us, right now, this is a community member who this is kind of centered around and all this deliberation and consideration is kind of swirling with that person in the middle. And I think if we are interested in this conversation, we need to pick this up and shoulder that burden because I don't think it's fair for this kind of level of debate about one community member's gesture. If we want to have these larger conversations, let's have it. But I don't think it's fair just to have that focus on one person. So I I think if we can remove that person and have these conversations, I am certainly for it. I also do come back to the reality that as far as flying the flag, you know, there there is an order of operations as far as federal, state and local. That is just the reality of the country that we live in. Um, so I think in terms of level setting, it is also important for me to know like, that is how the system operates and to, we all should remember that.
Yeah, so.
But yes, I'm in favor of amending.
The clunky.
This is going to be the clunky motion. Is, are we ready to vote on the motion to amend? So I'm going to call the question.
Can you reread it, please?
Yeah, I'm going to try. So, uh, what, um, the motion to amend is, is to add to the original motion to rescind, and I'm not going to read that whole thing, if that's okay. Um, to have the board take up the matter of how to display symbols of welcoming and inclusion. And I think I captured everything there, um, Mary Heather?
Yeah.
I think we all know what it is. So for so for those all in favor of amending the original motion, that doesn't, it's just changing what the motion is that we're going to be voting on, right, at this point in time? To include the words to have the board take up the matter of how to display symbols of welcoming and inclusion. Uh, please, and now we're going to do a roll call vote.
Okay.
I think that's better.
Yeah.
Especially since, um, Laura's remote, it's an important thing to do.
Let me just get.
Let me, um.
Give me a head start, please.
Yep, I'm so sorry, I should have said something earlier.
We need to get you pre-printed sheets.
I think we do.
Then we don't have to sit in a seating chair.
No, not necessarily.
She could call on us, actually.
Yeah.
Secretary, um, the clerk actually can call, that's what they do at the State House. They do it alphabetically, so we could do that in the future. And then Laura is online.
Okay, we're good, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, want to start with Laura?
Yeah.
What's it, Laura?
Yes.
Okay. Jason?
Yes.
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Ellie?
No. Yes.
Tricia?
Ellen.
Ellen is yes. We're, uh, let's try that, happy here. Rod?
Rod is no.
Okay.
Yes.
Jess is yes, Steve?
No.
And Suzanne?
Abstain. I'm so confused by what even the motion would mean, that, I'm sorry, I'm just going to abstain.
Okay. Okay, so the motion, um, I believe passes.
The amendment.
But the amendment, the the motion to amend. It is a motion.
So I have, uh, eight yeses, three noes, one abstain.
Okay. So now we have a new motion of the original motion, right? And now I will, um, read that with these new words. The way the motion now reads is, um, to rescind the board decision to accept the flagpole donation at MUHS with the stipulation that only the American flag be flown on that pole and have the board take up the matter of how to display symbols of welcoming and inclusion. Okay, so that's how the motion currently reads. Now we can continue discussion on the newly amended motion. If any.
Call a question?
Or, or I can, yeah, if we're ready to call the question, we can do that as well.
I may be confusing things here, but I would consider an amendment to that motion that that conversation also includes symbols we are required to display. And so it's both. I mean, it sounds like our flag policy needs to be revisited anyways. And if we can check that off as part of this process, I I think it just makes sense and that's what is the real root of this question is flying the American flag and so to have another conversation around the edges of it. I think we need to have the conversation in the center of it and also the conversation around the edges.
So are you, um, going to make a motion to amend?
I'm motion that we amend the previous amended motion to include symbols that we are required to display.
You mean you could add taking into account required states and, um, board policies and statutes, statutes and policies. Because state state law requires us to display the Vermont state flag and the American flag. And then we have a board policy that needs updating, so it could be both.
Okay, so how do we want to, it's Steve's motion, so what do you want to? I know it's hard.
I'm not as good as this as Mary Heather is, um, so I would amend the motion to include addressing symbols and flags that we are required to display by state law and board policy. And if we need federal law in there, we can include that.
By statute.
Company, yeah.
Is it okay just to say statute, statute? By statute?
That would be state, federal, I mean, that would, then it's like any law that has requirements around this, has to be part of any of our.
I would just say state law.
Okay, state law. Do we have a second?
Did, did you have, did the board policy get in there?
Did the board policy get in there?
I think so, should have.
Okay, I didn't get that.
State law and board policy.
Okay, so got it now.
Yeah, to a motion to include addressing symbols and flags required by state law and board policy?
Yes.
Does that capture?
Yep.
Okay, is there a second?
Uh, I'll second it.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Jamie?
I I feel that we're we're getting a, you know, it's getting a little cumbersome. I I was like, I, Mary Heather's clunky thing was like, I was like, okay, well, that's that's good. Yeah, that's the spirit of what we're talking about. And this is no offense to you, obviously, I'm just like, it feels a little bit like we have to do the thing you just said that we should do. It's required to do it by the law and we follow the law, even though our flag policy doesn't right now, but, um, you know, we're supposed to. And so therefore, it feels weird to have uh, um, something added on to the motion that we will do anyway.
I could give an operational point that's helpful, um, in favor, actually, of of this amendment, and that is that, um, without putting a board policy reference, then flags might never come up because you could, we could be talking about symbols that have nothing to do with flags in in Mary Heather's, um, amendment. We we never have to touch another flag, right? We could be just talking about symbols that are all over the school that have to do with, you know, um, inclusion and welcoming. If you include board policy and things where required, flags are going to be in the conversation because you both have a requirement to fly it and it is a symbol that is supposed to be, you know, something that that, um, probably falls into that characteristic or at least should be discussed that way. And you have a board policy that deals with flags. So operationally speaking, if I'm thinking about what do I trying to support? Steve's, uh, amendment to the amendment actually gives it more direction, um, that helps us understand what you wish to consider.
Ellen? We're not passing policy, though, right? We're just saying we're going to take up a conversation, so we would get to define what the conversation is. So I think we are overthinking this and over, um, over structuring it in the sense that, you know, if if the board, so it's Mary Heather, with Mary Heather's amendment, the board will take up. It's pretty vague, but I think that means that the board will discuss this and create some process around it and in doing that, we'll do what we we do best, which is make sure that there's a lot of consideration and conversation around that. And I think we would say we want flags included and we would say we need to consider state law. So we're not, I I hear what you're saying, Wendy, but I think that 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 like applies to the policymaking side of what we do. When it's setting the discussion, we can set the parameters for that however we want, and then that would set us forth wherever we go. So I do think I I don't disagree with the spirit of what Steve, you're saying at all. I I just think we're, um, we're wrapping, it's a hat in the hat at this point.
Steve?
That's a good.
I think part of the challenge that we've seen tonight is that we have a sense of what we're doing and where we're headed. The public does not necessarily, and so if there is a redundancy there, if it doesn't jeopardize any progress anywhere else and we are going to do it anyways, I think it would be good to have it out there so that like the third of the students that we have heard about that are interested in having the flag fly alone, know that we will have some of those viewpoints built into the conversation. And so that's where at risk of being redundant, being a hat in a hat per se, um, in terms of the public exposure and understanding how we're approaching this, I think it could have some benefits there.
Jess? I don't have a big feeling about the hats, but I'll just say that like, yeah, I just feel like it's a lot of unnecessary, like there are people on the board who do consider the American flag a welcoming and inclusive symbol, so it will get included in Mary Heather's amendment and like statute doesn't say that the American flag needs to be on its own pole, so like, that's not going to ensure that that point of view is in there. So I just think we can shore it up and, um, yeah, a lot of what Ellen said that like we're just saying that we're, there's going to be a conversation kind of on a topic and with a spirit, um, and I believe in the people around this table to like bring the right things to the conversation, especially because many people have said that like, a reason why they're interested in continuing to talk about this is because we they didn't feel like we heard, like, were able to take a lot into consideration. So I feel confident that even with an unspecified amendment, it will be a rich conversation.
Shall we vote on the motion to amend?
The amendment. I, um, I have a list here, so.
Okay.
Should we start with?
So what we're voting voting on now is to add additional language, which is addressing symbols and flags we are required to fly by state law and board policy. Okay, so, um, Laura?
Yes.
Okay. Jason?
I'm a yes.
Mary? I'm sorry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Jamie?
Can you come back to me, please? I'm confused.
Ellie?
No.
Tricia?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Ron?
No.
Jess?
No.
Steve?
No.
And Suzanne?
You were confused before. I was confused before and the motions just seemed to get more and more muddled, but, um, I like the fact that it's actually tied back to policy, so I'll say yes.
Jamie?
I I guess. Is that an option? Yes.
Okay.
What does that mean?
Your choice.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Okay. Did I miss anyone? I don't think so.
No, so we have eight yeses. We have eight yeses, four noes.
Okay, so the motion, um, to amend, the amended motion, um, has passed. So are we ready to call the question on the total combined?
Can you read it for me?
Yeah, maybe just for public record?
Yes, I can. Okay, the motion is to rescind the board decision to accept the flagpole donation at MUHS with a stipulation that only the American flag be flown on that pole and have the board take up the matter of how to display symbols of welcoming and inclusion, addressing symbols and flags we are required to fly by state law and board policy.
Including. And not addressing, including. Right?
I think he said addressing, that's what I wrote down.
Okay.
Including, including, please.
It's a kind of, to me, it's the same.
Okay.
Not really, but.
Well, I think Steve said addressing. I didn't write it down wrong, did I?
Okay, addressing is fine, whatever, I'm sorry.
Okay, so starting with Laura.
Can you come back to me?
Okay, Jason?
Yes.
Mary Heather?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Ellie?
Yes.
Tricia?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Steve?
I'm no.
And, um,
Yeah, my name's Suzanne. My brain just went.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch it.
Oh, you're still thinking, I'm sorry. I I had to remind Barb what my name was.
Yeah.
Would you like me to go to Jamie?
Sure.
No, Jamie already voted.
Laura.
Laura.
I'm going to give it a reluctant yes.
Okay. Suzanne?
Can I sit on the fence and say yes, no?
No, no, abstain.
The state, it's not going to make a difference and they all come in the vote, um. I'm going to say no.
Okay.
Okay, 10 yeses, two noes.
Okay, so the amended amended motion passes. Phew, are we tired? Next up is our second public comment period. And I'd like to offer anyone wanting to make a public comment, um, to raise their hand. If you're on Zoom, just raise your Zoom hand. Okay?
I just want to say.
Say your name again.
Really quickly, my name's Addie Lunsner. I appreciate this conversation. I just wanna say, a lot of times when I think, well, I'll start. In the meeting we had last night with our student group, one student said, when students walk into the room, there's often an assumption that they're there to, 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 there's often just assumptions about them. And I wanna say, I wanna encourage you to clear those assumptions and engage us in the conversation as young people because we have valuable insight and we wanna be part of this conversation as it continues, however it continues. So, please keep us in the loop. And, I mean, I'm not a high school student here, but please keep everyone in the loop because we'd like to be part of this conversation.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none. The next item is board reflections because we also have an executive session. So, once we go through the board reflection, then we can let MCTV go. Is there any board reflections? Ron?
Just a quick meta-reflection, perhaps, on the way we discuss things. There was a couple of references to, oh, you know, policy or some kind of committee should discuss that because, and I think the because is important, that's what I wanna bring up here. Because they don't have the rules that we have in this room, right? And, and I think we, there are other ways, and perhaps better ones, of making decisions among people who might not all see things exactly the same way than majority vote. Right, so consensus, I think, is highly, highly, and I would like to, I think I'll just keep on harping on this, maybe every board reflection. There are probably other ways than majority vote to decide things together. And I, I think, I'm gonna try to promote this.
Any other? Okay.
I do have a question about board reflections. Are they supposed to be focused specifically on the business at the meeting or general board?
It's primarily, you know, what happened in this space. And it could be, you know, how we handled it as a board or not, right? What we could have done, what we did well, what we didn't do so well and need to work on from an observation perspective. It's, it's really your chance to really just share what's on, on your mind.
Adherence to norms.
And, yeah, are we following our norms?
Yeah, with that in mind, you know, the last day of school is next Monday, correct?
On Tuesday.
Just Tuesday. There we go. All right. It has been on my mind, just with the status of Ripton. And, you know, I'm, I think the decisions we've made thus far, I don't have questions about them. I think they've been the right decisions, not that they haven't been challenging. I think we've made three, kind of, that have gotten us there, school size, reassigning the cohort, and then some of the conversations about school choice. I don't know that we actually made a decision there, but I don't know that we have that situation fully sorted. There's conversation about Ripton community, Ripton school. But I think there's still maybe some more conversations about the students that won't be going to that school next year. And I, and I think it would be helpful to come back to that. You know, and earlier, Wendy, you said the graduating class, we couldn't share anything with. And I think there's some students in the district that might benefit from some supports and things that we could share some information with and help them see as we send them to a school that isn't in the town they're from, how that works for them, how that gets them to the goals that they want to get to. And I also, when we were talking about facilities, board member mentioned that we can cross that bridge when we come to it in terms of transportation. We're kind of at that bridge in some ways. You know? Granted, it's for one school, but that question is kind of there. And so, I, I think there's more to come, but I really hope people don't not just assume we're gonna roll into Fault 25 and do the same thing we did last year. I, I think we should think about what it looks like when you have kids from a place and make the choice to send them elsewhere. And so, I, that's definitely weighing on me. And I think whenever we make that decision down the road, we should think about what it means.
Any others? Thank you, Steve. Okay, so, what I'm gonna do at this point is we'll be going into executive session. And I want to give our wonderful patient Drew time to pack up, but he's really compact these days. And then, we can go into executive session. Do we wanna, let's maybe make the motion?
Suzanne has to.
Suzanne.
So, in order to make this motion, we also need to decide who we are inviting into executive session.
Right.
So, I mean, if you want Dr. Baker there, we need to have her included in the motion.
Yes, so, that would be great. I would appreciate having her there. Anyone object? No? Okay. So, can I have a motion that we go into executive sess- session and include Dr. Baker?
I move that we go into executive session to discuss board member conduct per BSA, three, one, three, A3, and invite Dr. Baker to join us.
And can I have a second?
No, second.
Okay. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Two nay?
Yes.
Okay. Any abstention? Two nay?
Thank you.
Any abstentions?
Yeah, I didn't vote yea, so abstain.
Okay. So, at this time, we.